Sorry. Good evening to the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for August 15th, 2013. May I have a roll call of the members, please?
Ann Brinkman.
Present.
Alan Bucknam, absent. Steve Timms.
Yeah.
Scott Ohm, absent. Dick Matthews.
Here.
Amanda Weaver, absent. Tracy Gildner.
Here.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Thank you.
May we give the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have approval of the order of tonight's agenda?
I move to approve the order of the agenda.
I'll second that.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Thank you.
I move to approve the minutes of the June 20th, 2013 meeting.
I'll second that.
Please vote. You can, you can check.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Thank you. Uh, now is the time for public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. Is there anybody signed up that wants to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda?
Nobody signed up on the forum.
Anybody out there? Okay. I will say something very briefly. We still have one opening on the Planning Commission. Uh, this, I'm not quite sure what district it is. District? Three? Um, if you're interested in the planning process, want to understand what's going on with your city, and we'll make a commitment for the first and third Thursdays, and some outside, um, research, et cetera, then please consider approaching your city council person and showing your interest in the position. So, District Three, if you have interest and you're not in that district, please contact your, um, your city council person as well, because sometimes, uh, we have a little communal cross there, so. Okay. Um, I will close the public forum and open the public hearing. Case number WMS 1303, an application filed by Stephen W. Trout for a two-lot minor subdivision with a right-of-way dedication for property zone Residential One, R1, located at 3785 Independence Street.
And I do have a staff presentation. Good evening. I'm Lauren Mikulak, planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, um, presenting case number MS 1303. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations, and this digital presentation. If we could just get the lights to get, there we go. The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and the Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. We'll start with an aerial, 2012 aerial, just to orient you to the subject property. North is to the top of the screen. 38th Avenue is the street along the top of the screen. Um, and the subject property is outlined in that bright blue. Um, it's located at 3785 Independence Street, on the west side of Independence there, between 37th and 38th. Um, just to give you a little bit of context, the, the Discovery Park and Kipling are off the screen to the left. I have an excerpt of the zoning map. The property is zoned Residential One. That's a zone district that allows for single-family homes. And the property is embedded in a residential neighborhood. Those other colors on the map indicate Residential Two and R2A. Those are also residential zone districts allowing for single and two-family homes. As the commission is aware, um, the case tonight is for subdivision plot, so it won't affect the zoning or the permitted uses on the property, but we will analyze the proposed lot configuration against those R1 lot size standards. So, a little history quickly. Um, this image is an older subdivision, not the proposed one. West Haven subdivision is the original plot for the neighborhood. It was approved in 1951. Um, and since that time, several properties in the West Haven subdivision have been subdivided without going through a formal subdivision process. Um, the subject property is a good example of one of those. The blue shading shows the subject property, and it is comprised of the northern 125 feet of lots four and five in West Haven. Um, so the, the current application, the proposed Fox Hill subdivision, will create two development parcels, formalized two development parcels. Um, this is a copy of the entire plot that was included in your packet, um, but we'll look closer at those two new lots. So, this slide is showing those two new lots outlined in blue. There is a single-family home existing in the northeast quadrant of the site, and that footprint is, is shaded. Um, the plot will create a parcel for that existing home, um, on the east side, and then a parcel for a new lot on the west side. Um, and the new lot is considered a flag lot because the front lot line, um, is sort of, is not adjacent to the street. It's served instead by this 25-foot wide drive that we sometimes call the pole portion of the lot. Um, the table on the bottom of the screen is indicating those minimum standards for new lots in the R1 zone district, so minimum of 100 feet in width and 12,500 square feet in size. And both Lot One and Lot Two will meet those minimum standards. Um, one other item to point out on the plot, Independence Street is identified as a bike-ped route in the city's, um, bicycle and pedestrian master plan. And when new lots are created through the subdivision process, we look not only at the size of the new lots, but also, um, the size of the adjacent street and whether it meets current standards. And in this case, um, because Independence Street is in our bike-ped master plan, we look at that width, and it's just slightly substandard, so the, the narrow purple, um, that I shaded on the, on the east side, uh, two and a half feet of width will be dedicated right-of-way. Sidewalk on Independence in this area is intermittent, so the applicant was given the option to either install the sidewalk or pay a fee in lieu, and he's chosen to do the latter. Um, that's a pretty standard request with the creation of a new lot. Um, this next image, I think, will give you a good sense of sort of how the future arrangement will look. You can see the existing home on the northern, the right-hand side of the picture. Um, and the vacant area on the left-hand side will comprise that 25-foot-wide pole portion of Lot Two, and then the developable area will be in the background, sort of behind that, um, behind this white fence. So, the subdivision plot was, um, sent on referral to outside agencies and other departments. That's a standard part of our review process. Um, and I did explain in the staff report, there was some discussion with the Water District. Um, the property is located in Consolidated Mutual Water District Service Area, but the only water main in Independence is owned and maintained by Wheat Ridge Water District. Um, so we have worked over the past several weeks, the applicant in particular, to create an arrangement where Wheat Ridge Water will serve the property, but it will remain within the legal boundary of Consolidated Mutual, and Denver Water is agreeable to that. So, they will be able to have service, um, from the Water District, and all other utility districts can serve the property and don't have any concerns. Um, the Public Works Department reviews the technical components of a plot, and they have approved it. And the Parks and Recreation Commission is meeting tonight. Anytime we create a new residential lot, um, the assumption is that will create some impact on the city's parks, and so they will likely request a fee in lieu of land dedication for parks. Um, there were no written comments received from the neighborhood during the two-week posting period prior to this hearing. So, ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the subdivision. Um, as the commission's aware, the zoning code includes regulations for the plot, and the application does meet the requirements of the subdivision regs, and all agencies can serve the property. Um, I should note that because of the right-of-way dedication, this plot will go on to city council for final approval. Um, I think in the staff report, I had the incorrect motion. It'll be a recommendation for either approval or denial. But that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is in the audience as well.
Tracy? Monica?
No.
Steve?
Just, um, two questions, or three perhaps. I appreciate your presentation. Is there a, um, minimum lot frontage, street frontage required in Wheat Ridge? We talked about minimum width.
When we have a flag lot.
Yes.
So, flag lots are interesting. We measure the width, um, in the interior portion, so the, the technical lot width of the flag lot is 125 feet, and the minimum width of that pole is 25. And so, it's meeting that minimum. It usually is enough to accommodate a driveway, a fire truck if needed, and utilities.
Um, and then I know these flag lots create some interesting, um, design layout sometimes. What would staff propose the front setback would be for Lot Two?
Sure. Um, the code requires that the front lot be considered that, which is parallel to Independence, so the front lot line would be the eastern lot line. And in R1, the minimum setback is 30 feet. Um, the applicant knows that that is the current code requirement. It would result in a pretty narrow developable area. We have had people request a variance whereby the southern lot line would be considered sort of that front lot line. Um, and that's something that we would review once we have a site plan and know sort of what that house would look like.
And then, on the proposed Lot Two, that, that 25-foot, it looks like from the, from the, uh, um, photograph, there's a storm sewer that was going to take up a portion of that. And it looks like there's also a slope going to the, to the south there. Um, is there a minimum, I guess, driveway width? Would it fit between that storm sewer and potentially, I guess, the existing curb cut?
Yeah, that's a good question. We haven't looked in a lot of detail as to what that layout will be, because at this point, we're just plotting. Um, the 25 feet is almost exactly to the end of the fence.
Okay.
Um, and so, the minimum width of a residential driveway, I think, is 10 feet.
Okay.
So, there will be some options. Um, we'll have to look more closely at that certainly when we have.
But, but staff feels, feels confident that there is enough room to support the existing? Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Dick?
Yeah, I'm, I'm confused again, the, uh, in the part of the report, and when you look at the aerial drawings and stuff like that, the, uh, those blue lot lines are, uh, are really kind of square. But when I look at the actual plot, uh, you're creating a flag lot. Is, is there a right-of-way dedication that's required with that flag lot?
Um, the, the two-and-a-half-foot right-of-way dedication, the requ-
Is, is on the Lot One?
Um, well, it'll be on both of them, but the, let's see. So, it will, it will cover the entire frontage of the two lots.
That's what's in blue on that, uh, particular one. Purple. Or purple.
Yeah, the purple shading. Yep. And it's labeled on the plot as Tract A, and then refers to a note.
And with that, uh, the lot lines on that, uh, all of the setback requirements for the existing structure are met. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, I should have mentioned that. So, the lot lines were laid out so that we won't create any non-conformities, that existing structure, um, it, the front setback will be a little shy, 27.3 feet instead of the 30 that's required. It's not considered non-conforming because it's, um, our action. That's sort of reducing that setback, um, by the city requesting right-of-way. But the side and rear setbacks, um, will be, will be fine.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one question. Is it normal that if the applicant is interested in a variance for Lot Two, that they would do that at, when the site plan comes through? And so, they'll have to go through another process? Or wouldn't they consider doing it now in one fell swoop, so to speak?
Sure, that's a good question. So, typically, we entertain variances with the plot. When the variance relates to the lot size or the lot width, or somehow the layout of, of the lots that we're creating, because it's conceivable that you could create a narrow enough house to fit in the codified setbacks where the 30 feet are from the, measured from the east. Um, we don't want to sort of jump the gun. We don't have a site plan yet. The variance that they would request, if they were to request it, would actually be administrative, because in the R1 zone district, the side setbacks are 15 feet. Um, so, to switch, sort of switch and swap that side and front setback, because they're 15 and 30, um, meets that 50% threshold to request just an administrative process. So, it wouldn't be, um, a hearing, for example, necessarily, before the Board of Adjustment.
Okay. And my other question is, if you go back to the picture? Or to the picture?
Oops, sorry, wrong way.
So, um, Mr. Timms had commented on the slope. Since it's going to be, uh, under administrative review with the site plan and the driveway, my concern is any hard surface will cause exacerbated runoff to the neighbor, to the, uh, south? Um, will that be considered during the, um?
New, single-family homes don't have to go through a formal site plan process. They essentially get, um, the plans would be submitted to the Building Division, but they'll be reviewed by our, uh, Development Review Engineer. So, he'd be looking to ensure that there's no exaggerated drainage runoff. Um, I suspect that with something like this, they may consider like a retaining wall or something on the, sort of along the northern side of that, um, flagpole.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's a little, the slope may be a little distorted, because I did a panoramic and stitched it, and so, but there is certainly some slope there.
Anybody else have any questions of staff? Thank you. Is the applicant here and wishes to speak? Come on up. So, the process is, if you could give your name, spell your last name, and give your address, please.
Okay. My name's Stephen Trout, T-R-O-U-T. And, uh, I reside downtown at 100 Park Avenue West, Denver 80205.
Thank you. Did you have a presentation, or did you just want to answer questions?
Uh, I just really don't have a lot to add. Uh, the City of Wheat Ridge did a great job and good to work with, as always. And, um, you know, uh, our family moved into the home back in like 1970, and my mom still lives there. She just fell on some financial hard times, and so, we're, I'm just trying to help her out and, um, get the value out of the property that's there, that would probably be, um, extracted at some point anyway, for her benefit. And I know a lot of times that folks aren't crazy about something being built in the neighborhood, but I will try to work with everybody. Uh, I did go around and talk to most of the neighbors ahead of time, and most all of them said that they were in agreement and, and fine with it. So, I'll just try to work with the neighbors and, and make it as easy as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy, did you have any questions? Monica? Steve? Dick? I don't. I think that's it. Thank you very much. Is there, uh, do we have a sign-up? I'm way ahead, huh? Sorry. So, what we'll do now is, we'll call, um, the one name that's on here. If anybody else wants to speak that didn't sign up, that's fine. Um, you just come up afterwards, or raise your hand, and then come up. Um, and then after we're finished hearing your questions or concerns, um, there's another round where we may ask staff any questions, and the applicant any questions, and then we'll close the public hearing. Um, we'll discuss, and then we'll vote. So, that's the process. So, I have one name on here, and I apologize. Rodney Pinckney? Pinckney? If you could give your name, spell your last name, and your address, please. Thank you.
My name is Rodney Pinckney, P-I-N-K-N-E-Y. I live at 9665 West 37th Avenue, Wheat Ridge. The proposed subdivision is adjacent to my property. My property, before I moved into it, was originally included the, uh, proposed lot or subdivision. The property next to me also included the other half of it off along Independence. So, uh, those two pieces of the two lots were taken, and, uh, they were, uh, adjoint to move that home from 44th and, and Harlan over to that position. And that's sort of the history of how that property, uh, became developed as it is. I, I have to say that I don't think I was, uh, consulted by, uh, Mr. Trout. Uh, he talked about, having talked to the neighbors, I was not one of them, uh, on this. We do have a great deal of concern about drainage in that property. And as you can see up there, uh, that is a low spot. Uh, I have engineering plans from the, uh, Jefferson County engineer from years past, where they were making proposals on how to control the drainage from the properties above, uh, east and southeast of our property. We've had flooded basements. We've had flooded crawl spaces. And we've had a pond back there that grew cat tails for a great long time. Some of that was filled in by the Trout family and by the neighbor who owned the property prior to the Thomases, who own the property next to me now, uh, by putting in tile, uh, cement tile and so forth, to try to get that so that we didn't have that standing water back there all the time. So, it's a great deal of concern to me and my family about how this can be, uh, mitigated and be, uh, be assured that we don't have that kind of, uh, situation in the future. And our, our more recent rains that we've had show an awful lot of water still coming down into that neighborhood and into that drainage area there. Uh, some of it coming off of, uh, 37th, some of it coming down Independence, and still, uh, causing, uh, some water to stand back there. So, that's one of our major concerns. I'm not opposed to people, um, using their own property the way they want to. I'm not a militant about property use. There is a covenant, uh, that's in force for the, uh, West Haven subdivision. This property is part of that West Haven subdivision. The covenants have been contested and upheld in court as to, uh, specifically for the use of animals on the property. The covenants are in violation now, but the only way the covenants in Wheat Ridge can be enforced is through court, and not a lot of people have the stomach for having neighborhood brawls. So, we're, uh, we're trying to be good neighbors, but we also have a very strong interest in how this property is used. And why a new subdivision? I don't quite understand that. It is part of West Haven now. That's a subdivision. And now, we got a new subdivision called, what, Fox Hill subdivision? There must be some advantage to having another subdivision to separate it away from West Haven. I don't know what that advantage might be. I'm not, uh, I'm suspicious, though, that there, there must be some reason that hasn't been stated. Since I haven't had an opportunity to view the, uh, the materials that I just picked up here today, I can't suggest any, uh, plausible motives for this. So, I, I ask you to please consider these things. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions of the speaker? Tracy?
Are you the corner, are you're on the corner house there?
Well, I'm on the, next to the corner.
Okay, so you're on Independence, or you're on 47?
I'm on 37th.
Oh, 37, sorry.
Second house from Independence.
Okay, and then there's the one house that's adjoined to yours that's?
That's on the corner, yeah.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions? No. Thank you. Thanks for coming in very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Come on up. First name, last name, spell your last name and an address. Thank you.
Susan Pinckney Todd, P-I-N-K-N-E-Y hyphen T-O-D-D. I live at 3233 Fenton Street. This was, um, my father, um, who spoke just now. And I grew up in the house that is, uh, directly south of the property that's to be subdivided. And my, uh, I just wanted to share an opinion is that, and I, I do respect the fact that, uh, the Trouts and Moores are, um, looking at that property with, um, having some value to them and to their mother. The future of my parents, uh, is at some point to sell their property. And I see that this is, has a potential of devaluing their property. Um, right now, the property actually is above our yard and could, depending on this, how many, um, levels you build, or at, at some point, just be peering over our lawn and into our back windows, um, or their back windows. So, um, I just wanted to express that concern, that, um, bring that to your attention, that, um, this would, in essence, I believe truly devalue their house because of it.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you. Thank you for coming in very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on the subject? Okay. Then I will ask staff. Does anybody have any questions of staff?
Do we know what kind of housing is going there? What type of single-family homes?
No. Mm-mm. We don't know. But, um, that again, if the, if a variance was proposed, that's something that we would look at. So, the potential variance would create a, um, increased separation between the Pinckneys' home and the proposed home. Um, so that would be a reason for us to support the variance, sort of respect that character of the neighborhood.
So, when the proposal's made, will the residents living in the area have an opportunity to, to know what's being proposed?
If there's a variance, there'll be a public noticing.
Okay.
But standard building permits don't require public input.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve?
So, there's public notification even for an administrative variance?
That's correct, yeah. Um, an administrative variance would include certified mailing to immediately adjacent property owners and, uh, white posting sign on the property for 10 days.
Tracy?
Yeah, I just have one. Um, didn't you, did you say that somebody was going to check into that to make sure there wasn't going to be any flooding or any problems with that water running into that before?
Exactly, yeah. When we get a new, um, when we get plans for a new home, it would include, uh, topography and sort of the grading plan. And we, our drainage engineer in the Public Works Department would make sure that it's not worsening, and hopefully, it would be improving the situation out there.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So, I have a question, two questions. Number one, would you recommend a condition that we, um, emphasize the need for topography and a review of drainage as part of this? Is that appropriate? That's question number one.
Um, I don't know, because at this point, we're just creating a lot that can be sold. That any building that had, that is put on the new lot would have to go through some sort of a review, and that is an automatic component of that review, is looking at drainage.
Okay. Um, second question. Um, the question of coven, um, covenants and the subdivision.
Sure.
The need to create a subdivision is because we are subdividing the property, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Is this minor subdivision lot trump the existing, um, covenants in the other subdivision?
Sure. Um, so, two things. First, restrictive covenants in communities nationwide are not enforced by governmental entities. Essentially, covenants are, um, the landowners who benefit from a restrictive covenant have the responsibility of enforcing them. And so, that's why Mr. Pinckney said you have to take it to court if you want to enforce it. So, they're private matters. We don't often even know that restrictive covenants exist, because they don't, they're not recorded or maintained or enforced by the city. Um, so, I don't really know the answer to that question, whether the new subdivision sort of voids the restrictive covenants. That would probably be a land use lawyer that would have to look into that. The reason that we do new subdivisions, so, the reason that it's Fox Hill instead of West Haven Amendment One, um, is because you're typically only including a plot the area that's affected. If we did West Haven Amendment One and included every parcel in West Haven, every property owner in West Haven would have to sign the plot, even though it's only one property owner that we're affecting. So, this is pretty standard practice to just sort of focus on the lots that are being subdivided in this case.
I do have one more question. Um, you said that there are some places that have already added on other houses there. Has it caused any problem with the water, or? I mean, I know that that used to be a lot where there was horses, and horses are still down the road and, I mean, farther west, but?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any issues.
Okay.
I haven't come across our department.
Okay. Thank you.
So, just to clarify, um, if this were to, uh- So just to clarify, if this were to go forward to City Council with a recommendation of approval, and it is approved, and the applicant decides to submit a site plan, it will be posted? It will be posted for review? It'll have a posting on the property for ten days prior?
Only if they're requesting a setback other than what our normal R-1 setback.
Ah, okay.
So if they want a variance from the setback, so if they want us to pretend like the southern lot line is their front lot line, then there'd be a posting. If they want to meet all of our standard zone district setbacks and height criteria, then it's a use by right, and they would just submit a building permit.
And then is there any recourse by the neighbors to have any input into what is built there if they don't go for a variance at all?
Not through the city process.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions of staff? Okay. Anybody else have any questions of the applicant? Did you want to provide any more information to us? Okay. Does anybody have any questions of the applicant? Then I'm going to close the public hearing. Time for discussion and/or a recommended motion. And please remember, for either one, to approve or deny, it's instead of I move to approve, it's I move to recommend approval, or I move to recommend denial.
I just want to have one comment, just on my own thoughts on this one. In general, I'm not a big fan of flag lots, and this one's particularly deep, going back one hundred and twenty-five feet on that pole position. That being said, though, right, we're under the legal obligation to review the criteria set before us, and subdivisions are not really discretionary. Do they meet the minimum requirements in the R-1? Do they not? And so this one does. For that reason, I will be in favor of this request.
I move to approve case number MS-13-03, a request for approval of a two-lot minor subdivision plat on property zone residential one, R-1, and located at thirty-seven eighty-five Independent Street for the following reasons. All agencies can provide service to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense. All requirements of Article Four of the Zoning and Development Code have been met with the following conditions: fees in lieu of street scapeing improvements be provided prior to recording the plat; fees in lieu of Parkland dedication be provided prior to recording the plat.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Please vote.
I would, yeah, I would like to make a, I am actually going to support this reluctantly. Like Commissioner Timms, I'm not a real fan of flag lots, and it takes a real leap of faith to believe that the city in approving the site plans will address the drainage issues, et cetera. And I certainly hope they do, and if they don't, there always is the court for recourse on that, because those are valid considerations. I know that there is that ditch that drains actually into the Apple Ridge Cafe, and there is a lot more moisture back there than what you would think, and that is a major concern. And I've got to trust that the city staff, when they look at the drainage plan, will be aware of that. And that's one of the reasons that I'm saying this. I want it said on record that I believe that there is a drainage problem back in that area that really needs to be addressed on any site plan. So as Commissioner Timms also stated, if the requirements are met, we don't have a lot of discretion to vote against a subdivision, simply because it's not aesthetically pleasing to us. So reluctantly, I'm going to be voting yes, but I hope those concerns are addressed in any site plan.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
So when does this go up? Before City Council?
The City Council meeting is Monday, September ninth. Those meetings begin at seven PM.
So Monday, September ninth, this case will be heard before City Council, so you can go before City Council and speak there like you did here. Okay? Thank you, guys, for coming in very much. So now we move to other items. Discussion regarding land use case processing and sustainability.
Yeah, this one, it's a pretty informal item. We, internally, we've started to look at sort of paper savings, cost savings, and one of the ideas that we wanted to propose, our internal referral process, when we send it to all the agencies, requires that an applicant submit usually about fifteen full-size copies of something, and that's the first submittal. And then for a meeting like this, we require that they give us another fifteen full-size, and again for City Councils. So we go through an enormous amount of paper just with a single sheet. With some of the applications you've been receiving that are like nine and ten pages, it's a lot of paper. So we were wondering if it would be acceptable, and we don't have to make a final decision tonight, to do maybe eleven by seventeen, and I have one, if it helps sort of for legibility, do an eleven by seventeen in the packets, but then also send out the PDF version, so you could maybe zoom in digitally if you needed to read something a little closer. We think that particularly, probably that first referral might stay full-size if some of the utility agencies sort of need to scale things, but for packets, if that's an option, we just wanted to get a sense. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. A lot of my family members have received gifts wrapped in discarded plans. Mm-hmm, we do, yeah. Yeah, we recycle everything, it's just, it's a lot. Good. An option. Okay. And like for, we're trying to think of examples, like when Incarnation came through, their first two pages were pretty detailed, but like their elevation pages, they weren't scaled, they didn't have a lot of text on them, and we still got, you know, thirty copies full-size. So there may be an opportunity for discretion on that. Okay.
So what is that required to change that...
That would just be sort of our, we could do that tomorrow. There's no code, and that's just sort of a procedure that we've gotten used to doing full-size, but what we'll do, we're revamping the whole review process, so we're trying to figure out if we can do a digital referral to our utility agencies. Right now, we send them a similar, not the staff report, but we send in via USPS mail, like the full packet and all of the referrals. So we're trying to gauge, most people do their red lines in Adobe PDF anyways, because nobody can read each other's handwriting anymore. So they've been receptive to the idea of doing a digital referral, so we're going to sort of create a new internal policy for what this process looks like from the beginning through the end.
So you were just going to see if we were going to be grumpy about it or not then? Okay.
Well, I know Scott likes to scale things, and he's not here for input, so I don't...
Well, here's my only concern. What are the demands or the requirements for a neighborhood meeting?
There's no requirement for any plans at a neighborhood meeting.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. But that's a good question. Segues into my next question. So when we were looking at sort of cost-saving, for neighborhood meetings, our radius of sending out letters is six hundred feet, and for public hearings, it's three hundred feet. And one of the, we don't have neighborhood meetings for every application, but the question that we always get is, if this moves forward, will I get another mailing? And the answer is not always yes, because the radius shrinks a little, and we haven't looked a lot into what other communities do, but we were thinking it might make sense to make those two noticing radiuses more consistent, so that people are getting consistent notification. That would be a code amendment. And with that, right now, what we're doing is for the public hearings, we send certified mailings. For the variance, we send certified mailings, and those cost three, three fifty-six for each envelope. And what we're noticing is that more and more frequently, somebody needs to be present to pick it up, and so it just goes back to the post office, and we have hundreds of certified mailings that get returned to us, and it's expensive, and I think, we think that it might, people might actually get the letter if it's not certified, because they can just get it in the mailbox. That would be a code change also. It's in our code that it needs to be certified mailing. We did ask our city attorney if that's an acceptable change, and he seemed to think it would be. And then the third component in that same code section, so the radius for neighborhood meetings and certified mailings, is increasingly, sort of with the digital age, we do a lot of, we have a legal notice in the transcript, but we put the full explanation, or if the legal description, for example, is really long, goes on the website. So the transcript would have the abbreviated description of the request, and then the full one would be on the website, and we should be codifying sort of how we're doing that public notice. So we just wanted to make sure there are no red flags if we decided to pursue a code amendment, yeah.
I have a red, not a red flag, but when the registered mail is sent, is it sent to the address or is it sent to the property owner?
It's sent to the property owner. Public hearings only go to property owner addresses, yeah. There's a barcode on it. How does that, I don't know how that works on the receiving end.
Well, one of the things we do in the tax preparation industry is when we're sending a large check to the IRS, we send it certified mail, return receipt requested, which means that somebody over at the IRS has got to sign for it. That generally delays that check for about ten days to a week.
Right.
So it gives you a little float. They eventually will sign for it, but they have trouble finding somebody that'll take responsibility for correspondence that they know has a large check in it.
Right.
And I have to believe when you're sending out those notices, it's the same thing, that people get the notice that says, "Go over to the post office and pick up your certified mail and sign for it." And if they work, the post office is closed when they're home, so, you know...
Well, and often, so our mailings go out two weeks before the hearing, and we try and stay on top, so Kim's usually sending them a day or two before that, two weeks. But by the time somebody gets it, then the notice actually isn't really that early for them. We do use the return receipt for code enforcement action, where we need to make sure that somebody's actually gotten it, but for public hearings, we're hoping to get a higher receipt rate, essentially, if it's not certified.
So I believe if we, I'm okay with dropping the certified letter. However, I'm concerned about reducing the six hundred.
Radius.
Yeah.
We haven't done a lot of homework on that. I think it was a, it's something that we've occasionally gotten complaints from people where I got a letter and then I never got another letter, and now you're telling me it's approved, so...
Yeah, I understand syncing them up. Yeah, I'm okay syncing them up, but, I mean, if we're saving you some money on the cert...
Right. Find a balance.
Yeah.
And Lauren, I can, I'm a hundred percent in favor of dropping the certified. I was in proximity of Incarnation, and so I kept getting nice little notices in my mailbox. I can tell you, I went to the Tennyson Street post office once, and then after that, I stopped going, and so you all lost money on me. So I'm in favor of that. In terms of the distance requirement, I can tell you that we just went through that research just at the first of the year, and we found that the average municipalities in Denver Metro is about five hundred feet, and so we were actually doing three hundred feet, and me and Sally, I work at, so we actually bumped ours up a little bit. So if you're looking at around six hundred, that's not too far off from the standard that we found, so.
Thanks.
Anything else?
That was all I had.
What do we have coming up?
That's a good question. We are probably not going to have, well, we are not going to have the meeting on September fifth. We're hoping to have a plat for the Perrin's Row at DePew and Thirty-eighth. Their civil documents are not quite ready. So on September nineteenth, we anticipate a relatively full agenda with Perrin's Row subdivision, potentially a minor subdivision, and then the update of the Northwest Subarea Plan that was in full process until Sarah left in March, it's finally been picked back up. So we're going to study session with council on Monday, and we'll have a draft for you guys to review for the nineteenth.
I will not be here, so whoever...
What date is that?
The next meeting.
The nineteenth of September, yes.
September nineteenth.
Yeah.
I will not be here.
I have a permit for the Grand Canyon at that time.
That's okay. Okay.
I can guarantee you...
Who's our vice chair, Scott?
I think it's Scott.
I think so. We'll do an email that just says the next, the fifth is canceled, the nineteenth is on, and hopefully gets...
Get people...
Yeah, heads up. Yep.
Because you've got, you lost two just now.
Okay.
I'll be here. Okay, is there anything else?
I do have one question. Lauren, did City Council vote on the Incarnation subdivision plant? Did that go to council?
It did. It got approved. They are working on finalizing their drainage plan so that they can get permits for the street and for the first phase of building.
Thank you. I did see their sign posted in their quasi alley on Thirty-eighth, so, okay, thank you.
Is there, I have to say, I was on the garden tour, and soon after the property, we heard way out on Forty-fourth or whatever with the subdivision, and the first two visitors were the neighbors. On Thirty-eighth, yeah. Yeah. They were my first two visitors, so we had a discussion. It's awesome. I mean, we had a great discussion about that, so. Is there anything else?
No.
I remembered the special meeting we had on June thirteenth, because we didn't have a quorum. The meetings have been, or the minutes have been prepared, but I forgot to include them in this meeting, this agenda packet, so I'll include them in the next agenda packet, so we'll have two sets of minutes.
Anything else? I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second it.
Please vote. And all in the audience, remember, we have an opening. Good evening to the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for August fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. May I have a roll call of the members, please?
Ann Brinkman.
Present.
Alan Bucknam. Absent. Steve Timms.
Yeah.
Scott Ohm.
Scott Ohm, absent. Dick Matthews.
Here.
Amanda Weaver, absent. Tracy Gildner.
Here.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Thank you.
May we give the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have approval of the order of tonight's agenda?
I move to approve the order of the agenda.
I'll second that.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Thank you.
I move to approve the minutes of the June 20th, 2013 meeting.
I'll second that.
Please vote. You can, you can check.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Thank you. Now is the time for public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. Is there anybody signed up that wants to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda?
Nobody signed up on the forum.
Anybody out there? Okay. I will say something very briefly. We still have one opening on the Planning Commission. This, I'm not quite sure what district it is, District 3? If you're interested in the planning process, want to understand what's going on with your city, and will make a commitment for the first and third Thursdays and some outside research, et cetera, then please consider approaching your city council person and showing your interest in the position. So District 3, if you have interest and you're not in that district, please contact your city council person as well because sometimes we have a little communal cross there, so. Okay. I will close the public forum and open the public hearing. Case number MS-13-03, an application filed by Stephen W. Trout for a two-lot minor subdivision with a right-of-way dedication for property zone residential one, R1, located at 3785 Independence Street.
And I do have a staff presentation. Good evening. Lauren Mikulak, planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, presenting case number MS-13-03. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations, and this digital presentation. If we could just get the lights to, there we go. The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met and the Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. We'll start with an aerial, 2012 aerial, just to orient you to the subject property. North is to the top of the screen. 38th Avenue is the street along the top of the screen. And the subject property is outlined in that bright blue. It's located at 3785 Independence Street on the west side of Independence there between 37th and 38th. Just to give you a little bit of context, the Discovery Park and Kipling are off the screen to the left. I have an excerpt of the zoning map. The property is zoned residential one, that's a zone district that allows for single-family homes. And the property is embedded in a residential neighborhood. Those other colors on the map indicate residential two and R2A, those are also residential zone districts allowing for single and two-family homes. As the commission is aware, the case tonight is for subdivision plat, so it won't affect the zoning or the permitted uses on the property, but we will analyze the proposed lot configuration against those R1 lot size standards. So a little history quickly. This image is an older subdivision, not the proposed one. West Haven subdivision is the original plat for the neighborhood. It was approved in 1951. And since that time, several properties in the West Haven subdivision have been subdivided without going through a formal subdivision process. The subject property is a good example of one of those. The blue shading shows the subject property and it is comprised of the northern 125 feet of lots four and five in West Haven. So the current application, the proposed Fox Hill subdivision, will create two development parcels, formalized two development parcels. This is a copy of the entire plat that was included in your packet, but we'll look closer at those two new lots. So this slide is showing those two new lots outlined in blue. There is a single-family home existing in the northeast quadrant of the site and that footprint is shaded. The plat will create a parcel for that existing home on the east side and then a parcel for a new lot on the west side. And the new lot is considered a flag lot because the front lot line is sort of, is not adjacent to the street. It's served instead by this 25-foot wide drive that we sometimes call the pole portion of the lot. The table on the bottom of the screen is indicating those minimum standards for new lots in the R1 zone district, so minimum of 100 feet in width and 12,500 square feet in size. And both Lot 1 and Lot 2 will meet those minimum standards. One other item to point out on the plat, Independence Street is identified as a bike ped route in the city's bicycle and pedestrian master plan. And when new lots are created through the subdivision process, we look not only at the size of the new lots, but also the size of the adjacent street and whether it meets current standards. And in this case, because Independence Street is in our bike ped master plan, we look at that width and it's just slightly substandard, so the narrow purple that I shaded on the east side, two and a half feet of width will be dedicated right-of-way. Sidewalk on Independence in this area is intermittent, so the applicant was given the option to either install the sidewalk or pay a fee in lieu, and he's chosen to do the latter. That's a pretty standard request with the creation of a new lot. This next image, I think, will give you a good sense of sort of how the future arrangement will look. You can see the existing home on the northern, the right-hand side of the picture and the vacant area on the left-hand side will comprise that 25-foot wide pole portion of Lot 2 and then the developable area will be in the background, sort of behind that, behind this white fence. So the subdivision plat was sent on referral to outside agencies and other departments. That's a standard part of our review process. And I did explain in the staff report, there was some discussion with the Water District. The property is located in Consolidated Mutual Water District Service Area, but the only water main in Independence is owned and maintained by Wheat Ridge Water District. So we have worked over the past several weeks, the applicant in particular, to create an arrangement where Wheat Ridge Water will serve the property, but it will remain within the legal boundary of Consolidated Mutual. And Denver Water is agreeable to that. So they will be able to have service from the Water District and all other utility districts can serve the property and don't have any concerns. The Public Works Department reviews the technical components of a plat and they have approved it. And the Parks and Recreation Commission is meeting tonight anytime we create a new residential lot. The assumption is that we'll create some impact on the city's parks and so they will likely request a fee in lieu of land dedication for parks. There were no written comments received from the neighborhood during the two-week posting period prior to this hearing. So ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the subdivision. As the commission is aware, the zoning code includes regulations for the plat and the application does meet the requirements of the subdivision regs and all agencies can serve the property. I should note that because of the right-of-way dedication, this plat will go on to City Council for final approval. I think in the staff report, I had the incorrect motion. It'll be a recommendation for either approval or denial. But that concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is in the audience as well.
Tracy?
Monica?
No.
Eve?
Just two questions or three perhaps. I appreciate your presentation. Is there a minimum lot frontage, street frontage required in Wheat Ridge? We talked about minimum width.
When we have a flag lot.
Yes.
So flag lots are interesting. We measure the width in the interior portion, so the technical lot width of the flag lot is 125 feet and the minimum width of that pole is 25. And so it's meeting that minimum. It usually is enough to accommodate a driveway, a fire truck.